We're ready. We'll go ahead and call this board of supervisors meeting to order and we appreciate everyone being here and I've asked supervisor Ron Campbell to lead us in the pledge.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. We'll now go to agenda one B called the public. Is there anyone that would like to address the public? The board and call to the public.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Jean Swannison. I work for engineering part time and I just wanted to give you a little bit of update on the Americor. Rock dams and then we have just personally for ourselves for our ranch, we bought a drone to try to see if we can check on cows that way, but. I'm going to use it. It's first use is going to be to go take pictures of the rock dams that we did up in the lazy bee because I'm still getting Americor kids asking me. How how it's going and all that kind of stuff. I also wanted to pass on. I just told Matt that I learned from the application process that you can call on Americor teams for emergency response. So I think that might be something to keep in mind because at least our experience with them, they're good, good group of kids there. You know, they've learned to work together, this kind of stuff. I think they could be a real plus and other things and you have to sign in your application that you know that they could get called off on an emergency or anything and. Maybe even building rock dams for post fire flooding kind of stuff. I'm thinking about that. And maybe even to pass it on for Ruido. So I don't know if anybody's seeing any of the pictures out of that. Boy, pretty scary. The other thing I just want to tell you is that a new Strong Towns book has come out. It is called escaping the housing trap. And it's about dealing with the housing crisis and the shortage and the costs and this kind of things, trying to think of it in a more systemic kind of way. This is my own copy, but I'm making an available engineering library copy for anybody who wants to check it out. I haven't had a chance to read it yet. My first copy that I bought, I loaned to our son. He read it on the airplane going back to an American Institute for Economic Research. And loaned it to the housing guy there. And so I had to get a second one. So I think it must be pretty good, but I haven't read no more than the preview of it, but it talks about changing. Our thinking about housing as an investment to housing as just shelter and how to how to get to that. I can't quite get my mind around that yet. But I'm thinking about it. So it will be available in engineering.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Aaron Miller. I work in the recorders office. We just wanted to inform everyone that we just sent out our uniform and oversee ballots. That's coming up for the primary. Last day to register or change your registration is going to be July 1st and early vote and mail in or mail by ballots will be going out July 3rd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else and call the public? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to agenda item two. The board supervisor will convene as the board directors of Green County Public Health Service District and after the order of business will reconvene as the board of supervisors, a consent agenda.
So move that we approve the consent agendas posted.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We are now convened as the board of supervisors and the board supervisor will convene as the board of directors of the Green County. Blood Control District and after the order of business will reconvene as board supervisor, a consent agenda.
In what would we approve the consent agendas posted? I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We are now convened as the board of supervisors and we will go to agenda item four. Mr. Bolinger, welcome and thank you for what you do, you and your staff.
Sir Chairman, members of the board. Good morning. With with the recent heat that we're experiencing in Arizona. Low humidity and winds. We are hoping that you will consider. Consider some emergency fire restrictions for unincorporated areas of Greenlee County.
Yes, and and I also, I I know this is something, a template of what we've done in previous, but I also. Appreciate some of the exceptions that is in the order. So. If there's not any other discussion, a motion would be in order.
Well, I move that we approve of initiating the emergency fire restrictions ordinance within the unincorporated areas of Greenlee County. About Secret of National Forest implemented stage one fire restrictions on June 6th.
I second that motion.
We have a and and just for clarification, when would this take effect immediately?
Take effect immediately. We're hoping that we've been kind of coordinating with the other fire, the fire departments. So that our restrictions will kind of go in when our incorporated areas go into effect. And also, as you said, Mr. Chairman, the the emergency fire department has sent us a letter. Requesting that there be an exception for public fireworks display on July 4th.
Well, in the previous motion, I would just add it effective immediately.
In a second.
I second that.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or clarification? Seeing that will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We'll now go to four B and and that will be the Maransy fire and we need to act on that, please.
I saw move that we consider the approval for the Maransy Fire Department to conduct the fireworks display for the 4th of July celebration in Maransy.
And I second that.
Have motion and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes and thank you very, very much, Mr. Bolinger. We'll now go to agenda item five, Mr. Manus, Public Works Roads Manager. Good morning.
Good morning.
We're doing well.
My name is Dave Manus, Public Works Road Manager. Those pictures that I just gave you guys, I had sent them, but I'm not sure if we're going to be able to pull them up on here. So you can just glance at those there. Anyway, I'm here today requesting permission to crush rock in the gravel pits on the Juan Miller. Upper Eagle Creek pits and the crushed aggregate rock will be used for county maintain roads. And what this machine is, it's a it's a nine fifty loader. It's got a generator in back. The the big front end that you see on there, it has teeth under there like diamond plate and it acts as a crusher. While up north, all our pits are depleted with the material that we have for those county maintain roads up north. And I went to Vince, he's the district ranger for the Forest Service and me and him got together, we talked about it and looked at the pits and whatnot and. Got permission from them, of course, that, hey, can we go in there and crush these pits to create material for the roads and they were all for it. Unfortunately, with the fire restrictions that we have right now, we're going to have to wait till July till we get some monsoon and all that. But I just want to keep you guys in the loop. Keep in mind, this is a budgeted item. Just want to keep you guys in the loop of what we're doing up there and everything and asking permission to proceed with that.
David, two questions. First of all, I know this machine in some of it, like you go down Juan Miller and and it it. Creates material as you as you take it across the surface. So this machine does that. And then also you're taking it to. The pits that we have and actually crushing rock right there on side.
Yes.
Correct? So it the dual purpose?
Yes, and we got a pretty good game plan where we got the pits all cleaned up. So as that machine moves. From right to left, we push it with our dozer, stockpile it, the loader and the dump trucks haul it to our station where we stockpile it. That way, when he's done going across, he's got a clean slate to start all over again. That way we get the best use for our money, you know? So.
And I also see that it's it is at a budget expense of twenty five K and and. This is an hourly rate. So once we get to that, you won't exceed twenty five.
It won't exceed twenty five.
And how much material do you expect to get?
Man, Richard, I can't tell you an exact tonnage.
Okay.
But.
How long do you think it will last?
It's a lot. I mean, the last time we did it, which was fifteen years ago, we had trucks just running nonstop the whole time, stockpiling material. Shame on me for not getting a tonnage, but.
That's all right. Thank you. And is there any other questions or clarification?
No, just make sure you get some rock on that Red Hill Road and those muddy spots.
And that's the problem. Real quick, I'll explain that to you guys. On that Red Hill Road, all that clay material since that burn we have. What it does is it sloughs off into our water bar right there and our drainage system. While Billy Marx up north taught me this, we were pulling from the ditch and putting that material back onto our road. And when I talked to him about it years back, he told me pull that material up on the road. Take that material and get rid of it, put it on washouts or whatever, because what we were doing was we were mixing our. Clay material with our good road based material and it was making it real slick. So we quit doing that years ago. But we're just out of material up there and to and to haul it from here up there, the cost would be crazy. So.
Mr. Chairman, to clarify, the board is, if if you approve this, will give permission now, even though the expense may well be incurred in FY twenty five. We do have the budget capacity to manage it. We would have preferred to do it in this year. But but Dave and I talked, he called me both from the pit yesterday as well as from the Forest Service and. We don't want to start a fire. We certainly don't want to do that and it's it's unfortunate, way too dry right now. So I just to clarify, this will likely be budgeted or likely be billed in FY twenty five as opposed to FY twenty four. But if you have permission now, then we'll proceed once the conditions allow it.
Well, with all that's been said, I saw move that we approved the request for permission to crush rock in the gravel pits on Juan Miller and Upper Eagle Creek. Pits as presented.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And David, thank you, you and your crew for all you do on the roads and around. We appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We now go to agenda item six and Mr. Repair.
Thank you. Let's see if I can make this work here. You know, it seemed a lot brighter on my my computer screen last night. That seems sort of dark, doesn't it? We'll get off that screen then. Want to present what we've put together and and you have received copies of the tentative budget. We'll talk about one change that was made as we go through this, but. The principles underlying the 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 policies underlying the budgets, what's driven this budget. We've had extensive. Budget work sessions this year. We've talked about a lot of things where we want to put emphasis, where we want to cut back. And those principles show up in the numbers, but I'd like to talk about it in terms of of the underlying principles that we used. Obviously, we are required to set forth an estimated budget. We're required to publish the budget. The tax rate sheets that come from Arizona Department of actually come from the Property Tax Oversight Commission. As well as a public notice announcing the hearing that will be held in July to adopt the final budget. That package has already been prepared and we can adjust it if the board directs that we need to. But at this point, it's it's about setting tentative property tax levies. And setting a tentative budget that can be only adjusted down if you adopt it today as presented. The principles behind this, once again, we've we have designated one time revenue for one time projects and we have emphasized. And prioritize the use of federally sourced money. Now that's that's a phrase that. Recognizes the nature, particularly the ARPA money. So ARPA, one of the the projects for small entities like ourselves. Was to receive the money, use it as revenue replacement, which we have done. And that created a pot from which we will then do capital projects. So it's no longer COVID money. But it was federally sourced. In other words, this was money from outside of our entity entity that will be used for capital projects. Same with the LATCF funding. It appro- it it amounts to approximately two point nine million. Dollars that that we'll have and it is outside of our our property tax levy. It's outside of our general fund revenues and so forth. We don't anticipate any additional federally sourced COVID related money because they're they're frankly not there. And if anything, there is talk whether they can get it done or not, I don't know, of recalling some of that money. And so we have prioritized the use of that money so that we can get these projects done in short order. We we've also. We can leverage that money to enhance our projects or speed our projects along. We have, for example. We have applied for some some grant funding on some of our projects that will be used in conjunction with the federally sourced money. They'll give us greater capacity, not only get things done, but get them done more quickly. We're still looking at projects and the board has already started this this process. Of deciding what makes good sense. You can build something, but you really want to look at this and say, over the long haul, is this a good cost benefit project? Can we build it in such a way that our maintenance will be minimized? Can we build it in such a way that it'll have a twenty, thirty, forty, fifty year lifespan? And those are the projects that we are that we're targeting primarily. Part of the way we we leverage the funds we already have is by creating and we learned this this budgeting tool several years ago. But we create a pot that allows us to apply for grants we've not yet realized. And that's an acceptable budgeting practice. In this case, we budgeted four hundred thousand dollars. If we don't get it, we don't spend it. But if we do get it, then we've got the ability, the budget capacity to use that. Similarly, if these grants we've applied for don't come about, we have the capacity to apply for different grants and look for different funding partners on some of our projects. For the first time since since the expenditure limit was adopted back in the early, early eighties. Greenlee County is not up against a expenditure limit seal. The the action you took two years ago has removed that barrier from us. That does not mean we are without barriers. Our barriers now are revenue driven. And and the the overall guiding principle of this budget is we will not spend what we do not have. There are various tricks that can be done to expand a budget artificially for a year or two. But those things come home to roost. We're going to talk about one later in this presentation that we did not do that just about everybody else did. And and having consistently developed. And when I say conservative, this is not the the political sense. This is fiscal conservancy. In other words, we we manage within the resources we have. And that is that is a principle this board has always abided by and we will continue to in this budget. Um. When you look at the, and we'll cover this in more detail later, but when you look at the overall budget, if you take away those federally sourced do- dollars. And I say take them away for adding purposes because in a very real sense, we're spending other people's money. To get some capital projects done. We take that away and and I should have changed this point five two. Um, there's an adjustment that came in just last night from the state budget that adjusted up to point six five. So our overall budget on the general fund is point six five percent higher than last year's budget and it is changed in the later slide. Um. Which in the current environment of our revenue flows is is remarkable. Again, I I give credit to Renee and Austin, and particularly in the last couple of weeks, because Austin's been diverted on other projects. Renee has really fared it out in these budgets and found where where there's, um. Some money that can be repurposed, reshuffled in a way that we can stay within our revenue, uh, projected revenues. Um. I have been so impressed with both electeds and department heads. Uh, there were things that were on their longer, long-term agendas. And one after one, they came and said, you know what? We we would like to do this, but this year isn't the year to do it. We'll put it off till next year. We'll see what the revenues develop and and so forth. It has been a a very positive team approach to this budget. And so as a result, we're we're going with what a conservative, uh, revenue projection and living within that. Um, I say Renee identified, but also our our departments, as we worked with them, electeds, as they looked at their budget, saying, hey. We can cut a few thousand here. You you take, you know, uh, out of out of probably two hundred and fifty or so funds. If you can cut a thousand here and a thousand there, maybe five thousand here, five thousand there, next thing you know, you begin to realize there's some savings. Um, and that took place throughout the county family. For that, I am tremendously appreciative. It made what started out to be a very difficult budget season into a very manageable budget season. Um. We are not completely past, but but certainly further out of the woods than we were two years ago. On the availability of of vehicles. We can now get them. They're not. You can't get all you want as quick as you want. Um, for example, last year, we ordered four police package vehicles. We got two. And that may well continue. Um, but we have pivoted back to our competitive bidding process, which has served us for so many years. And it it seems it's gonna work well for us going forward in the future. Built into this budget are the ability to purchase, um, what we'll call passenger vehicles and police vehicles. We will also finance some heavy equipment. We've done that because the the financing terms are tremendously favorable to us. It works in conjunction with our our, uh, maintenance program. So we can purchase, for example, an eight or nine hundred dollar greater. But after our trading goes in, we're paying only two hundred thousand or so. And under those financing terms, it makes sense to continue that pr- uh, process. Uh, with Empire, they've become very good partners, a a long-term partnership that both of us see value. When they get our machines back. They're the first to go off their lot. People, in fact, uh, I was told just last week, there's a fellow showed up and. Was asking when that grader would be available. He wants to buy it as soon as we're done. And so, um. But we'll continue to look for opportunities to to purchase where we can, finance where the terms are favorable and it makes the most sense organizationally. We have been approached, uh, about a lease vendor, uh, and and pitching an idea about leasing vehicles. We are still in the process of evaluating the vehicles we leased. Um, we agreed to lease two years, but we got them closer to a little over a year ago. Um, but that process. Is not as easy to evaluate compared to some of the purchase methods. We're in the process of evaluating that. We're open to that, but the standard against which we'll measure leased vehicles. Is what is our cost per unit if we just buy it outright or finance it in our more traditional ways? Because in a in a very real sense, a leased vehicle with the option to purchase is a financing option. It's a financing tool, if you will. Um, but if if in the end that lease looks favorable, then we'll come back with a recommendation. But we'll be measuring against our more traditional purchasing methods. Um. This is a bit of a historical look back. Um, we have. Tried very hard and been by and large successful in staying ahead of these high inflationary times. Uh, and in some cases, we've actually given our employees a little bit of gain over over annualized inflation. In twenty three, we're the first county to suggest a combo approach to, uh, wage increases. Uh, after we we talked about that, three or four or five other counties took a similar approach. And and the way we built this gave the most relief to our entry level or low lower wage earners. Uh, so in tw- fiscal year twenty three, we adopted this combo, two percent plus a dollar fifteen for everybody. That resulted in just shy of ten percent for our our lowest wage earners and, uh. Just a hair over three percent for our wage earners at the very top of the scale. It protected those most vulnerable to inflation against that inflationary push. And so, um, that got built in, that's still part of our wage scheme. In twenty four, the board gave across the board five percent. Uh, inflation had backed off from the eight percent to the three to four percent. Uh, and it fluctuated throughout that year, sometimes just a hair over four, sometimes closer to three. Um, then we also looked at at some targeted marketing market position adjustments and we made those. This year, um, the budget includes a five percent across the board. We are not looking at at, uh. Spot or targeted market adjustments, that's some of those areas where. We've, as we've talked to the departments and electeds, saying, we can, we can wait on that. We'll, we'll make those adjustments as we go. Inflation is again, uh, I looked yesterday, they said it's it's currently at three point three, one index said three point four. Um, it's not to the two percent that the Fed would like it to be, which means that, um. They're not lowering the the federal funds, uh, rate in hopes to slow the economy down. But again, somewhat of a historical look, um, during the the five-year period. Four-year period from eighteen to twenty two, we increased rage wages by a total of eighteen point three percent. The next nearest was Maricopa County and then Apache County was the next highest small county. In, uh, with the three to ten percent increase in twenty three and five percent last year. In the last three years, our wages for our employees have risen on the low end, thirteen percent to those earning the least. Have been have been increased by roughly twenty percent. And over the past seven years, you can see the wage increase there. Now that is a two-edged sword. I think the board has done a very good job of protecting employees against inflationary pressures. Inflation doesn't hit equally across the board. Uh, and as you read these reports, you'll see that that things like fuel, uh, will be up. Some indexes actually remove some of the more volatile items to get a better, more stable look at what inflation is doing. If you're in the market for buying a home. It's rough and it's not just rough in Greenlee County, it's rough across the state. Um, when there's a shortage of available housing, housing costs will go up. And so for some people, inflation hits harder than others. But this board has done an outstanding job of as best we can protecting our our workforce against those inflationary pressures. The downside is is that. How long can you keep this up? And and we'll be watching, uh, monthly to see where inflation goes. We'll see if the Fed begins to drop interest rates. When you drop interest rates, the economy will pick up and that's the balance they're trying to to do is. How do we slow the economy enough to get inflation under control without tail spinning into a recession? Um. With respect to our our PSPRS debt, many counties and cities. I I won't say all, but many who address this problem. Address the the unfunded liability for our pension, our police pension program by taking on debt. The advantage was they were getting, they were getting bond repayment interest rates at one and a half, well, one and three quarters, I think, Keela County. Up to about three percent. And that that depended on the size of the debt they're trying to pay. And that also depended on on the credit worthiness of the of the entity, you know, selling the bonds. What has happened in that circumstance is that as the the PSPRS pension program has become more sound physically. And there have been literally billions of dollars put into that infused into that program where the. And and you recall that it's managed as one, but every entity owns its own pension program. But as has become healthier, there's been a a push to include new benefits. And so the argument from those who finance is saying, hey, we still owe that debt. We're paying that debt for twenty years. So if you don't include a benefit and the way to pay for it at the front, you're gonna be in a deficit at the end again. Um, some entities, ourselves, uh, Graham County, I think, is is on a five-year plan. But some entities paid a bunch of cash. The state paid a bunch of cash, um, last year to the program and and it helped. We are the only, um. Well, and then then there are some, I I believe the city of South Tucson, they haven't made any contributions. And so they are right now essentially putting a dollar into the system and goes right back out to their retirees. It's an almost dollar for dollar exchange. Um. That's the most expensive way to address the problem and that is to not address it at all. Using a combination of federally sourced money as well as, uh, county general fund money over the last two to three years. Greenlee County has completely paid off its PSPRS debt. When we were having this conversation a year ago, we had a one point nine million dollar amount. We paid it down. We paid it down to zero. Now, with market fluctuations, you'll see that our funding ratio is ninety six point seven percent as opposed to one hundred percent. That is within the margin of flexibility that you expect in markets. For many, many years, the standard was if you're eighty percent funded, you were full funded. Counting on a twenty to twenty-five year horizon to make up that twenty percent. Um, given market volatility of late, we we chose to target one hundred percent. But ninety seven, ninety six point seven percent is is close enough. We could in literally in a month, that could be erased. With with, uh, investment gains. It could also widen a little bit. That's the way it is with investments. Um. But.
When do you?
Go ahead, please.
When do you true this up? I mean, I I know there's all the, as long as the market and it'll always, there'll always be some gap there and and there's. But. Is there ever a time that you that? You true it up or you just let the market go and and? And then when you start getting near that eighty percent, you need to start addressing it. Is that is that the way that's managed or?
My suggestion is don't wait till we get that low, but. What what we have here is an actuarial.
I I.
And so a- as you know, they take assumptions in that. Some of those assumptions have been changed over the last three or four years to better approximate reality. Um, one of those was the growth in in wages. Another was a, uh, the repayment. So so it was seven and a half, seven point five five percent. That's been backed off to a seven percent rate of return. But in terms of truly truing it up. It trues up at the time the person leaves employment. So if we put in a dollar today, knowing that we have to pay ten dollars in twenty-five years. Then you you get that growth over that period of time. Cause when that person retires, they get their full pension, whether it's funded or not. But between now and then, there are actuarial assumptions that say, do you have enough in the bank to make that ten dollar payment? And so in a sense, it trues up every year and I'll explain that in the next couple of slides. And in another sense, it trues up at time of retirement. Um, but that percentage will fluctuate. Um, there are some entities that are as much as a hundred and forty. Well, there's actually one that's four hundred percent. Last I checked, Tombstone, uh, Marshall's office is way overfunded. But there are, there are lots of, uh, entities that are funded in the one oh two, one oh four range. A year ago, that are probably closer to about ninety nine.
And 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 I guess. More to my question is. We don't wanna have to come up with one point nine million like we 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 had to. We don't wanna ever get in that position. Cause we want it, we want the county to stay healthy. A- and I know with market fluctuations. That 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 could be raised this year or or in a couple of months if if the markets change. But. Is there, is there some kind of policy or whatever that we need to set so we don't find ourselves looking at a one point. Uh, nine million, uh, liability, uh.
We we have a policy in place that is part of the adoption today that addresses that. Um, but it it assumes a twenty to thirty year truing up, if you will. But I think what we do is we monitor this. So for example, on the long haul. Um, investments work out, particularly equities. They they always will go up over the long haul. But you take the the two thousand eight recession, that was a huge dip that took about twelve years to recover the value that was lost. It has been recovered and then even in the last two years, the equities market has been high enough. That it not only made up for the hole that was lost, but it actually built on it. But if you happen to be in that trough right after a recession where their value is lost. Yes, a a good friend of mine retired not long after two thousand eight, two thousand ten. And he wasn't anywhere near close to having recovered, um, from that that shock to his investments. But I think when we hit certain, you know, when we approach ninety percent funding. Then I think we look at that and say, what will it take to bring us back up to ninety five? Because that's gonna be a lot smaller dollar value than if we drop to close to eighty and try to make up that gap or back into the seventies.
And part of the reason we got into this too is is when things are good and and the markets were doing real good, then you're could. It's, there's a tendency to say, okay, your contribution goes down. Because the markets are making up the difference. You're you're getting seven percent return or ten percent, whatever it is. And and then it's. Then when the market begins to turn, they, people don't wanna pay more money out. Where if they'd have kept it at at a steady level and hindsight's all fifty fifty. But but and I know that's with the board of those twenty twenty.
Well, our funding policy and by law, the that takes place automatically. In other words, when it begins to drop, our our contribution rate on the employer's side will go up. Now, a better example of what you're talking about is our, uh, elected officials retirement program commitment. It has begun to be a little bit more healthy recently. And I say a little bit incrementally, maybe thirty-two to thirty-four percent, somewhere's in there. But as it has increased, the statutory formula is that our contribution drops ever so slightly. There's a push with the the panel that recommends policy changes to PSPRS, who manages the ORC, to say, don't do that. Just keep it steady. If we're at seventy percent, keep it at seventy percent for the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. It's expensive, but you begin to make up that that deficit that we're.
We're suffering under at the moment.
So. Um.
Anyway, I didn't mean to get us off on some field. Thank you.
No, and we'll we'll, we're gonna cover that more in depth a little bit later on exactly how that's done. Um, we continue to see dramatic savings due to our out-of-county tuition. And I don't bring that up simply to beat an old drum. I bring that up because the work that we've done has given us budget capacity in years like this one where we can make ends meet. So, um, I just checked last night, um, and our. The subsidy we did not ask for has been included in the budget. And so our bill, which was about five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars total. Has been subsidized by three hundred and eighty-three thousand so that our actual out-of-pocket spend would be about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Down from eight hundred thousand dollars just three years ago. And so that's that's one of those structural things that that the board has done that will pay dividends. You know. As, uh, hopefully, unless Lutzia gets together and decides to reverse course. But at this point, it seems to have settled to the point where this is a part of the base where no one's looking at. And and now if things get tighter, they start looking harder for quarters in the couch cushions. But at this point. That is investment that continues to pay. Um, as we talked about the Federal Reserve's, um, target inflation rate is two percent something. You you'll hear different reports that'll say it's once they hit two points, something. They they've hit their mark. Others will say they wanna get to two to two point one or two point two. It's unclear and the Fed hasn't been exactly clear on when they will begin to change their federal lending rate as well. Um. But whereas a year ago and two years ago, there was this constant storm cloud on the horizon that a recession is coming, a recession is coming. You hear and read almost none of that anymore. Um, the Fed has seemed to have successfully threaded the needle to slow the economy without dropping us into a recession. In fact, the economy in Arizona right now, as states go, is one of the top five, um, economies in the country. Um. It does, however, have inflation has a continued effect on us. We we've talked about it in terms of our severance tax. We've talked about it in terms of our own cost, our. We we've talked about it in terms of our severance tax, we've talked about it in terms of our own cost, our fuel, our. Purchasing cars, our purchasing parts to repair the cars, I mean, it filters through the entire organization. We have seen last month and then the receipts that we we got confirmed just last Thursday or Friday. I think it was, show an upward trend in our shared sales tax revenue. That's positive. We don't, what we don't know, and Renee have talked, and I have talked about this extensively, we don't know what the trend is. It appears that the three hundred and ninety-four that we received in. March. Was the bottom out. But it may not be, so receipts for this month were four hundred and ninety-one thousand. And and that gives us the capacity to make the adjustment that came in just last night. But until they stabilize. Our recommended staff recommendation to the board is continue a conservative approach to both budgeting as well as spending. We've we've pegged four hundred and twenty-five thousand as our monthly shared sales tax revenue income, and I think we'll meet meet that. Frankly, we could end up with four hundred and seventy-five, four hundred and ninety as an average at the end of the year. But when in doubt, and and where there's lack of stability, it's better to predict low. As I say, our our average even this month is still about thirty to forty percent below a year ago. And about, well, on the, it's about twenty percent below a year ago and about thirty-five percent below our three-year average. So with that, the approach, the budget has been built on a conservative revenue projection. This is one of the last minute surprises. We heard of one last minute surprise earlier in the week, and then we got word last night that there was another one. They passed the budget about ten o'clock Saturday night. By and large, the state's budgeting balance budget does not affect counties directly. It's it's, there's a couple areas where we know there'll be some effect. One is they passed, and I hadn't even heard this was in the hopper, I don't know where this came from, but. Superior Court Judges' salary were increased to begin January of twenty-five. It'll go up ten thousand dollars, so for us in a budget year, that affects half the year. And then in in the following year, in twenty twenty-six, it'll go up another ten thousand, so that the the. Superior Court Judges' salary would be at two hundred thousand. We cover half of that. The state covers the other half. But the trickle-down effect is that our JP salaries are based on a percentage of the Superior Court Judges' salary. Based on volume in their case, productivity credit, so there's more stuff going on at the court, their percentage goes up and so forth. So as a result, this this raise trickles down to the justices and and then, of course, it affects FICA and other EREs. The total budget impact, now the other one was that they changed how much JP reimbursement we get from the state. It was, we pay sixty, they pay forty. Our percentage has moved up to sixty, sixty-seven percent, theirs dropped to thirty-three percent. The overall financial impact of those two decisions, the raise in the salaries and the drop in the contribution to JP's. Is just a hair over thirty-three thousand dollars, which in a budget of our size is manageable. And so what we've done is is we've managed that with some internal adjustments. And you'll see that on Schedule A, the final bottom line. Is about twenty thousand dollars. Twenty-two thousand dollars higher than than the one that I produced just even a few days ago. The drop in the JP salary reimbursement, we have managed internally on the revenue side. So the sheets that are out here on the the table, as well as the sheets I left on each of your desks last night. Incorporate this last-minute legislative change. Our our general fund overall budget is twenty thousand nine seventy-eight, four sixty-six. This this tells you about where we're at in this part of the budget, it was until last night, twenty thousand nine fifty-five, three seventy or three sixty. You live with that thing so much, you get to the point where you know that number. That represents an almost seventy percent increase over last year's budget. However, when you take the federally sourced dollars out of that, and I, again, we talked about that. That's set spending other people's money, if you will, our overall net increase is only, you know, two-thirds of a percent, give or take. The primary tax rate has decreased ever so slightly, last year was point eight one one eight. So that's down about one percent, and as we know, better than perhaps any other county in the state. That's direct inverse to our net assessed value, which increased by about twenty, well, eighteen million or so. And that that likewise is not a very big adjustment, and our tax rate went down accordingly. Total budget is thirty-seven point three million. And that's about an eight point two six increase. Again, a lot of that reflects the the federally sourced dollars that we use for capital funds. Because when you take that away, it's actually slightly lower than last year's overall spend. Most of the volume in this is special revenue funds, funds that can only be used for the purpose they were generating. Easiest examples, you can only use county attorney enhancement money in the county attorney's office. You can only use jail enhancement for the jails. And so that's what that that difference is. Secondary property taxes, the maximum that, no matter what your property value is, that you can charge for public health services is is twenty-five. That's where we were at last year, we're down, you know, one, one. It's actually twenty-five one thousands down, so it's twenty-four seventy-five. And then Flood Control District is actually up slightly to nine point one nine four eight. Our combined tax rate actually decreased. Slightly, but it decreased to the to the taxpayer, it's going to look almost exactly the same as it did last year. Because we didn't exceed, we didn't exceed the primary property tax TNT rate, which is truth and taxation rate. Neither did we exceed it on our special taxing districts. We don't have to hold a public hearing to get that approved. Now, we hold a public hearing for our overall final budget. But if we were to exceed the tax rate, then we also have to have a separate hearing to to hear public comment on exceeding that tax rate. We go through this every year to give you a kind of a historical look back. Why my numbers don't line up, they did last night, I don't know. But you'll see that that our our assessed value has been fairly steady for the last five, four years in particular. My suspicion is that as the economy continues to improve and inflation comes better into control. That net NAV will continue to climb a little bit. Inversely, our property tax rate reflects back on our our. Net eight, and you know, net assessed value. You'll see that on this. That over time, over the long haul, our tax rate does rise. In real dollars, it doesn't rise. Now, I say real dollars because that's adjusted for inflation as well, some of the the net assessed value likewise reflects. The increased value of property that is taxed, does that make sense? Combined ten-year history, you can see that we've we've been very steady for the last four years. Really, if you go back to the tax year eighteen nineteen, we've been pretty steady there. We had the one year when the net assessed value was over five hundred million, that it dropped. But we've been right in that one, one twenty to one twenty-four, twenty-five range for some time, and and we look to continue that. I'm going to go through this quickly, we went through it just at our last meeting, and this is the same presentation, there's there's nothing new on this. However, in the proposed motion I gave you, it does allow for changes to be made between now and adoption of the final budget. So I would ask that you look particularly at those tier two and tier three projects and say, is there something that needs to be elevated? This reflects the elevation of the. Public Works Building and the watering system at the Loma Linda Park as directed in our last meeting. But but look through it, and if there are other ideas, we might want to look at that and say, do we elevate that as well? As I've cautioned before, we've learned a lot by by switching to a geared and targeted way to do this. We've found some structural weaknesses, we've, we have found some reasons why things didn't get done. We've begun to address them, they're not all going to be addressed in one year, and they may not be addressed in two years. But we're refining that process. Again, this allows us to take a long view of what we're trying to do. It it should be adjusted annually. But it's it's a five-year, rolling five-year look at what we're trying to accomplish. It's defined by long-term projects that that have a typically the threshold is a hundred thousand. Sometimes for long-term projects, we've been able to build them for a little bit less than a hundred thousand, but that's our our baseline evaluation for a capital project. We we hope that it'll have, well, the ones we've been undertaking will have a much longer life than five years. But the idea is we're building long-term with with high-dollar projects that we need to plan for. And you see the the types of things that we're looking at. Again, the the whole purpose is to keep us on task. One of the things that we discovered about the old way we did the CIP was that. Without targeted priorities, it became kind of a jumble. And there'd be a lot of times we'd take on a project that we hadn't even considered or even thought of. That weren't necessarily emergency or have-to-do-right-now-type projects. And that got us off track on getting the things we wanted to get done, done. With this type of a process, with the tiered process, we've been able to say no to some projects. Because we needed to focus on the ones that were on the list. Tier one, of course, those things that we want to get done are substantially done in the current fiscal year, the year we're planning. Tier two are those that that may come up the next year or two, but which planning needs to take place now so they can they can get on the board and get done. And then tier three are more aspirational projects, things that we want to keep on or on the forefront of our mind. That are not likely to take place in the next two to three years. This, you'll see, last year, I think we had eighteen projects. This reflects the three or four that that haven't quite gotten done in connection with the runway and so forth. So box, box, bridge design, and then, of course, the landfill, the fairgrounds. Public Works Facility and then Loma Linda Ball Field. Our list is much smaller. We recognize that trying to get all the stuff done that we tried to last year, we bit off a bit more than we can chew. You'll see the funding sources out there and our, these are ballpark guesses of the cost of these things. But but there's, there's our tier one projects for the coming year. Tier two has been thinned out as well. We have been monitoring the fairgrounds floor for many, many years. And we, I I believe Tony has said that we may have a solution that may work better. Than some of our, to to chip that thing out and replace the whole thing would be almost prohibitively expensive. It is, it's rough in some areas and it and there's water seeps up. And so we lose paint, but a coat of paint for the fair every year is a lot cheaper than replacing the entire floor. But we begin to look at some other solutions similar to what we've put in some of the other buildings as a better solution long-term for that. So, but those are, those will require some planning. Again, you have access to all these, and I'll be glad to give them to you in in bigger print form so you can see them. But that's our tier two and our tier three, like I say, are more aspirational projects. Are those that that, and some of these may be addressed, for example, Loma Linda Wash Bridge. We've made the first round of cuts for congressionally delegated spending. A CDS grant through Senator Kelly's office that would realign about a mile and a half, almost two miles worth of. Ward Canyon Road and would bypass the existing bridge and and replace it with a new one. And so we may not replace that bridge, it may become part of a walking trail between the two communities of Loma Linda and Verde Lee. And we wouldn't have to fix the old bridge, we would just replace with the new one and the realigned road. Like I say, we've made the first cut there, we've not made. And there's there's several other processes, and they made it clear in their letter that you still may not make it. But we're in for the first phase. Any questions on the capital improvements? Like I say, I I encourage you to look at those lists, or if you have something else on your mind, let's talk about them, let's get them up there. If we need to have a work session at our next meeting to to adjust those, so that when we adopt in the final budget, we've got a plan that we can we can focus on. Unassigned fund balance policy. This is. In in fact, I read for the first time that someone in from the Department of Revenue actually called this a rainy day fund. They've always been very hesitant about calling it that. It it's an unassigned fund balance. Ours was set up intended to allow us to taper into, so if we had a shock to our system. And we needed to go, for example, for a budget override, which we did twenty, twenty-five years ago. Then this would allow us to ease into that. We would not anticipate spending this all at one time, you'll see in the po- policy that it represents two point three months of expenses. We had to just live on this, we'd be out of business in less than two and a half months. But the idea would be that you whittle away at this and you you do other budget cost-saving measures to get you through to. An override election or whatever next thing we need to do. It's about twenty percent, not quite twenty percent of our overall general, our overall general fund balance. Our budget balance and there are specific triggers and criteria. Now, we've talked about, and this year was not the year to do it, but we need to increase that four million up towards five million. And and maybe even slightly higher than that, but given, given our budgets and where they've been. We need to increase that to probably three to four months worth of a budget capacity.
And I know you see that, but there's missing a zero.
Indeed, it is. The column is in the right place, but it is missing a zero. You know, this would be a budget process if if Superintendent Campbell didn't catch me in at least one typo. And we've seen two already, I think, thank you.
That's all right.
The policy works such that we don't touch this unless we have a month with revenue receipts under four hundred thousand, which we hit two months ago.
You're missing another zero, I'm just telling you.
I probably cut and paste, oh, it's a different one.
It's on the other end. Look at it on the bright side, we're going for zero. Sorry, I had to bring it up.
No, no, there's probably one on the next page too, we'll find out.
We'll see.
I I I hope that that, yeah, whatever that number is, it's not a number, right? That period is also supposed to be a dash. But but when we, when we dip below it, we did it this year, as soon as we hit that three hundred and ninety-four. Renee and Austin and I began to sit down and say, what is causing this, what, where's this coming from? What are the aspects of the economy and our revenue sources that has caused this drop? And we were able to identify some of that. We saw it internally in our own costs, we we, I don't know a single number, not one, of the budgeting process. For our our major taxpayer. But we know how the seventh formula works, and we know how the sales tax distribution works. And so as a result, we know some are in broad sweeps, that it's it's more expensive to produce things, it's more expensive for us. And so we began to identify things that we could, we could do, that if that continued into the next month, as our policy says, at the second month. We then come back to you and and suggest things like. Travel restrictions or not filling vacancies or specific permission to fill vacancies. We didn't get a second month, it bounced back up, but we have not stopped looking at those things. Our policy says when we start to see two months of that, we're not going to wait. Until we're, you know, three or four months of sub four hundred thousand before we come with solutions. We will be looking at that with the very first month. This allows us, of course, to. Become more efficient where we have to. And sometimes the more efficient means we don't do some things that we would otherwise like to do. We cut down to that, which is clearly essential. And we, in in very, very lean times, we keep the doors open with the essential functions that have to take place this year. Even if we had been three or four months under the four hundred thousand dollar mark, we cannot say, we just won't do an election this year. Can't be done. And and in the current climate, we can't, we can't do elections on a shoestring. We've got to be prepared not only for what has happened, but what may happen. Other things we may well cut back on. We hope that the trend that we've seen the last two months continues or at least stabilizes and we'll be fine. But as part of our adoption process, we adopt this unfunded or unassigned fund balance policy, which you have in your packet. On the the PSPRS, this will address the truing up, if you will. The annual required contribution is a combination of what was owed in the past. And how many dollars do I have to put away now to meet that obligation in twenty, twenty-five years? Now, I say twenty, twenty-five years, but we have people on our force who could retire. Anytime, if they chose to do so. Those dollars should have been put away twenty, twenty-five years ago. And that's how we got the unfunded liability, unfunded actuarial liability is they weren't put away. Benefits were added that weren't paid for. And so, so that was the problem. It was, it was not funded correctly. The, the rate of return was not correct. And as a result, we built up that balance. There will be a small portion. So to true us up to one hundred percent would quite require three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. To true us up to exactly one hundred percent. Again, that's actuarial. If we have, let's say, a brand new officer joins the force. And decides a year in that this isn't for me, I'm going to do something else. And we replace that young officer with a fifteen-year veteran. Our annual required contribution is going to jump. Because the life expectancy, the, the career life is only five to ten years. And we've got to put away enough money now to pay that obligation in five to ten years. And so this will always fluctuate somewhat. Um, that three forty-two may be five hundred thousand next year. It also may be twenty-seven thousand next year. And, and there's a lot of moving parts into that. A year ago, we are one point nine million. That speaks volumes about the commitment of this board to true this thing up and make it, uh, sustainable. Let's put that in real dollars. If you take the three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars and you amateurize that over a twenty. Uh, actually I did it on a thirty-year basis, which is what the statute requires. That only costs us twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars to, to pay that three hundred and forty-two off. Again, is that figure moves that annual con- contribution to the unfunded liability will change as well. And then of course, the remaining amount that we pay is to fund the current obligation, putting the dollar away now to pay the dead ten dollars in twenty years. Here's where, um, we start to see some dramatic changes. So as three years ago, we were funded at fifty-nine point two percent. In twenty-two, we were seventy-eight point two last year. Um, well, that's, yeah, in twenty-two, twenty-three, and then we're up to ninety-six point seven. Here's what it looks like in raw dollars. We will save, having trued it up about almost two point seven million dollars over the life if we had done nothing. If we had just set it down and said, okay, we'll pay that one point nine off over thirty years. We would have paid about one and a half times in interest alone, let alone principal. That's where having used and particularly used federally sourced dollars to pay the bulk of that. I sometimes brag about this to my colleagues when we get together because that's remarkable. It's remarkable now and will be remarkable over the next twenty to thirty years that we're not paying that additional interest. Chairman Lunt and I visit often, the state had an opportunity to do the same thing last year. Um, except in the E ORP program. And there was a proposal out there. There was a bill written. And it was moving along until they decided to give away the bank and gave literally every legislator twenty million dollars to use however they want. That went to a, a fairgrounds project in Prescott. It went to a tax rebate. It went to all kinds of different things. And in the end, we, as a state, will pay hundreds of millions of dollars. In interest that could have been reduced to zero or close to zero. Our language in our, in our P S P R S, uh, pension funding policy is unchanged. We will still take that three hundred and forty-two thousand and amateurize it over a thirty-year period. Accounting for fluctuations over time. And so, um, like I said, and that's just what we talked about. The market will adjust. And if it begins to dip lower and lower, then I think we had, we address it early. So that we're not in the, in the nearly two million dollar hole. I'm going to cover just briefly, like I say, these forms are available. They will be available at the libraries, um. Starting tomorrow. Um, and here at our offices as well. Let me. Out of here. I hope this, this mayor may not rotate. I could have been moved presentation. Adobe wants to know if I'm satisfied with their project. I don't know. This is what we call schedule A and it's unfortunately a small writing. Uh, but it represents, um, what we call a summary of our estimated revenues and expenses. It's a one pager.
Um, you gave it to us.
Okay. And so, and you'll notice down at the bottom, the, the new balance is twenty million, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four sixty-six. And I'm sorry, the, these are pre-formatted by the Department of Revenue. They don't make, it's very difficult to blow them up. Um, and so on this one, that should reflect, uh, the pages I left on your desks last night. Um, but in, in short, those two figures down at the bottom that match to the, to the dollar are where we find our balance. Behind this document are the property tax, which we'll look at briefly. And then our expected revenues, which we call schedule C. Our transfers, which we transfer from usually the general fund into another fund. For example, we have an obligation to fund part of probation. And so we, we transfer that money from the general fund into the probation fund to pay for things like juvenile detention and those kinds of things. Often we don't spend that because we don't have somebody ask for detention. But if we had a serious crime committed by a juvenile. Um, a required long-term detention, we house them in Penal County and we need a, a large amount to make sure we can, uh, afford that. Those are done to the transfers on schedule D. Schedule E nicely, E for expenses. That's where every fund, both general fund and special revenue fund, we have worked with our own individual budget worksheets. And that is populated with what we project will be the necessary costs for every department and every elected official's office. Not just their general fund, but also all of their special revenue funds. That's schedule E. It's about four or five pages. Schedule F came into existence about five years ago, maybe six years ago. And it was a request, uh, wasn't a request, it's actually part of the legislation now. And that is where you take all these different funds, which you'll see that they're not all tied together because they develop, you know, this year maybe we get some money, we, we form a fund. Five years later, we look at that, there's no money, we get rid of a fund. Schedule F, uh, requires us to shuffle the deck. So that you can say, okay, the sheriff's office, they have all of these funds available to them. Here's how much they have. General funds, special funds, refunds from the state, whatever. And it does that for every department and every, every elected official. Schedule G is. How many positions we have assigned to the general fund? How many we have assigned to, assigned to special revenue? And the dollar cost associated with those, uh, full-time equivalent positions. We can certainly answer any question on any particular fund. Most of the heavy lifting, most of the work in this budget was done in schedule E. In the general fund categories. That takes up the first page in, and I think there's two lines maybe on the second page. But that's where most of the work is done. And that's where we went in and said, you know, okay, we've budgeted this much. You haven't spent that. We're going to reduce that for a year or two. Um, and so, uh, those kind of grander questions, I am certainly ready to answer today. Or we'll be available, Renee and I, um, as we go through, uh, through to adoption of the final budget. If you'd like to, to go through any of that right now, happy to do so. But the, but the, the summary page is up on the screen right now is, is where that all comes together. And, and that's where the budget is balanced. It's on that sheet. All of these sheets, schedule A through G, well, schedule A through E. Um, have formulas built into them so that when we make a change in one of the schedules, it automatically populates back over to schedule A. So we know exactly when we make a five dollar change, we're five dollars out of balance. And so we, we can, uh, make that adjustment on, on the fly in real time. Any questions about this? The proposed motion that I've prepared for you, um.
It's no good, right? Because we change, you change. Twenty-two thousand dollars.
You know, that's a good point. We'll scratch that out and add a different. Different figure into it. All the rest are good. Let me, let me pull it up and make certain that, um.
Yeah, I could. I, I, and you said you had to make a change. I said, well, then this motion that you gave us a week ago, isn't. Will no longer be valid.
Let's. I'm glad you caught that.
That's all we need. Yeah, because we, if we did it here, we could only go down from there.
It would be, it would be wrong. Uh, yeah, literally we got this email from C S A at four ten yesterday. I have. Hold on, let's see, what'd they call you? About five oh five? I finally got through my stuff and read the email and I said, oh, right. They, uh, they threw my budget off.
Yeah, I should. Just thought I'd bring that up.
Said that. Okay, so the, the very first figure, the twenty million, nine fifty-five, six seventy. If you could scratch that and replace it with this number. Twenty million, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. And the thirty-seven, three ninety-eight, five five eight. If you could replace that with thirty-seven, four twenty-one, three fifty-four. We can turn the lights back on. We can get the lights again. The other two, um, remain the same because they're, they're separate, separate funds. You'll see also that, that the motion allows us to make changes to the C I P for the final. Um, that is, that is not a direct budgeting function. It simply helps us plan the use of our, our large expenditure projects. But that is, that is our budget for the current year.
Does anyone have any questions of Derek or the staff? First of all, before we make this motion. Derek, we, the board really appreciate. Uh, you and the staff, and I know Renee has worked, I've come in there and his computer's smoking and he's scratching his head. Uh, we really appreciate and to all the elected officials that. And, and department heads, because this truly was. Uh, a great exercise. It's, it takes all the family working together to come up with a budget. And we appreciate all the effort that's gone into this. We believe it's, uh. And I. We believe it's a, a doable budget. We believe it's a sustainable budget. And, and I think that's important. And I know some of the counties, I've talked to some of the other supervisors and. They're struggling, even though their, their, uh, income has gone up, they're struggling because they spend a lot of one-time money. And now they have to come up with money for, on, out of their pockets. And so. We, the board appreciate this. And, and with that, uh, the others have any comments? If not, a motion would be in order.
I echo those comments.
Yeah, I just echo those comments myself and including the comments that Derek made of the department heads that. Said, no, I'll wait till next year and see where we're at and, uh, you know, the. The road crews that take care of their equipment because it's such an incentive to get a new piece of equipment after you trade in. Don't have to pay the full value of that, uh, piece of equipment. It's a, it's a team effort and, uh, thank you to everyone and including Renee and Austin and. Everyone that was involved in the budget process from the department heads, the elected officials. To what, to where we came down to this final budget. Thank you.
Yeah, just reiterating, I mean, I echo all of those comments. And Derek, I know that you're, you've put in a lot of work, uh, with your. With your team and Renee and Austin really been involved, uh, this year in the budget, but, uh. And I know a couple of missing zeros as because you've been looking at it until midnight, you know? And, uh, so we appreciate all that extra effort and, and get this done. And so. Proud of the fact that we were able to. Even, even with all of that and, and giving the. You know, employees a five percent across the board increase, which is great. We didn't think that we would be able to get that done because of. Lack of funds or lack of sales like tech dollars coming in. So, um, for us to be able to do that and still. Have the lowest combined tax rate in the state, um, lower just by a smidge than last year. That's just amazing to me. So good work.
Thank you. And thank you on behalf of everyone. It, it was, it was neat to work as a team. We, we really enjoyed that.
So with everything that has been said, I would so move to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-five Greenie County tentative budget in the general fund amount of twenty million, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-six. And a total budget in the amount of thirty-seven million, four hundred and twenty-one, thousand, three hundred and fifty-four. This motion includes the budgets for the flood control district in the amount of six hundred thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one. The public health district, service district budget in the amount of two million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty. The unassigned fund balance policy and the public safety personnel retirement system pension funding policy. And the capital improvement plan, which may be amended by assigning projects. To various priority tiers at the time of the final budget. A public hearing to take comments from the public regarding this proposed budget will be held on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
And I second that. We have a motion. The second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please. And do we need a roll call vote on this?
We do not. We can pick one, but we don't need one.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very, very much. And once again, thank you. Now we'll go to agenda item seven, uh. We'll turn time over to. God Administrator, repair and then to, uh. Bianca Casinier, the clerk of the board for calendar and events.
I'll be very brief. The, what I'm looking for at this point, when they bare, just barely adopt the budget is how does it hit us? And like I said, that we found out last week and then last night, two things that hit us. We've addressed those, so I won't address them again. There'll be a lot of talk. There is already a lot of talk about what was protected, what was not. Both sides got. The Republicans got to, to protect some things were important. Primarily some, uh, road projects that individual members needed or wanted. And things like empowerment scholarships, um, and so forth were. That was protect, no, no changes to that program. Conversely, there were some, uh, housing funds. There was some shoring up of, of, uh. Daycare. There were some funds that, that Democrats wanted as well. How they budgeted, how they balanced this budget in large part was to take wax at state agencies. A big chunk of what they did was came out of our water infrastructure, uh, that Chairman Lunt briefed us about. They were bragging that there's still four hundred and fifty-four million dollars in that fund. But if you recall, just two years ago, it had a billion dollars and they've whacked away at it. And, and some of the commentary now is we have just undercut our ability to secure our water future. Um, that's something that's going to play out over time. The secondary things that I worry about, we will watch for this, is when you cut a state agency, but they still have a mandate to do something. That sometimes shows up as a secondary or indirect cost shift. Um, for example, um, they may say health department. Do this task, but there's no grant dollars behind it. And so those are things that, that don't show up today and won't show up for a while. They, they won't show up for maybe two or three weeks, months. Or even into the next year.
Funded mandates.
One of those things, and, and it's indirect unfunded man. The, the, the mandate that we pay more for our court system, that's a direct mandate. It's the indirect ones that are hard to evaluate right now and I worry about. Um, the other thing that they did that I think is significant is you recall. That throughout this session, there was an argument about how long they should. Extend. Agency life. So all agencies have to be re-upped or reauthorized usually on an eight-year basis. And so, and, and they don't do them all at once. They, they stagger that. But this year, there's a lot of chatter about bringing that eight-year down to two years. Not require, not allowing any reauthorization until an extensive audit was taken place. And we frankly did not have the audit capacity in the State Auditor General's office to do that. Last minute in the, in the budget negotiations, they extended all of those agencies out to eight years. I think the Department of Commerce. Or the uh, ACA was extended to six, I believe I read last night or this morning. Either way, that'll provide some stability for everybody. That's a good thing. Uh, they still have not solved the agency head problem. There, there were no nominations made. Um, and no nominations approved in this session. And so that's still out there lingering. The governor, I believe, is, is intent on. Appealing the, the Superior Court's ruling that she has to appoint. And regardless of how that plays out, we'll see. The Attorney General is also rattling her saber to sue over opioid funds. Uh, that were used in the budget to be directed in the Department of Corrections. She's gonna sue the governor and legislature and everybody in sight. Those are things that will have, will play out over the next several months to see how they, they land. The last thing that is important in the near future for our elections director, but more importantly. Will bring uncertainty is that I think there are a total of. Fourteen or sixteen ballot referrals. Which means. We will almost, we will certainly go to a two-page ballot for the first time in our memory. That, that creates some issues of voter confusion. It creates. Management trying to manage those ballots a little bit more difficult. But the other uncertainty is that. One, once voter initiatives are approved, that changes our life. Uh, one that's out there that, if they approve is a border security thing, there is no funding for that at all, not a dollar. And so if, if that becomes law, there are new um, obligations put on local agencies. There's no funding for that. There, and those kind of things you don't know until they are either enacted or not enacted. So that's what we're looking out for because heaven forbid the legislature give us an actual signee dive where we can all take a big breath and go home. They've left Peasars out there that will keep us on our, our seats edge through January at least. When they start up again and come back to see what else they can fix. With that, that's, if you have questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but that's kind of where we're at. We will see things over the next two weeks, both from CSA, from ACO. Um, every, every analysis out there will, will give their analysis what to place. You'll read in the papers. But we'll start seeing this budget settles in over the next several weeks.
Any questions of Derek?
Nope.
If not. Bianca?
Thank you. Um, tomorrow, the nineteenth, uh, WIPA and ECO and then Saturday, the twenty second is the junior. That's all I have for June. You want me to add anything else?
Let, let's make sure that they know our LNA testing is coming up on the twenty sixth.
Okay, the twenty sixth is when the Secretary of State comes. And uh, does the testing, the LNA testing, checks our machines, ballots, make sure. They do make sure everything is good for the primary election. And that's next Wednesday, the twenty sixth. Ten forty.
Um, this is something that is very routine in elections and up until just a few years ago was something that we just took place down in fanfare. I cannot compliment our elections director enough. Um, she has lived with this thing so that for Greenlee County, it would be a. Very low-key non-event. Um, but that's in spite of waiting on, on different moving parts to get ballots back to us and get our, our election program. I, she won't save herself, so I'll say it on behalf. She has done outstanding. And that, that would be for her, like, in the budget is for me.
Also, on the, on the twenty sixth, the CSA, you know, along with ASU, they get a. Uh, detention, reti- uh, retention and recruitment study for, for law enforcement. Uh, why that, why there was such a turnover has been in, in the last few years and. And peace officers and detention. And they're gonna do a presentation at CSA starting at ten o'clock. To uh. Twelve thirty. For anyone interested.
And all are invited. I, I believe Chairman London is scheduled to go there.
Right. They, they invited the chairmans. Or a delegate and then, but it'll also be. Zoom. Thank you.
Um, okay, going into July, our first board meeting is on Tuesday, July second. Um, July fourth, our offices will be closed for the Fourth of July. Friday, the twelfth through the fifteenth is the NACO Annual Conference in Florida. Um, on July thirteenth, Saturday is Junior Rodeo. And the Greenlee County Chamber of Commerce will uh, host the meet the candidates night. At the Clifton Social Club and that starts at six. Um, our second board meeting, July sixteenth, and that'll be adoption of the final budget. WIPA on the seventeenth, Wednesday. July twenty fourth, Maranti Schools begin. And July thirtieth is Election Day. No CSA or county managers meeting. Uh, for the month of July. That's all I have for July. We have something else to add. August first, Thursday, the CEGO uh, administrative meeting. Junior rodeo Saturday, um, August third, Dunkin' schools start Wednesday, August seventh. Our, we will have a board meeting August eighth to set tax rates. County managers on the ninth. And then we'll have another board meeting on August twelfth, Monday for um, canvassing the primary elections. CEGO on the sixteenth, Friday, Greenlee will be hosting. Um, and then our board meeting will, a regular board meeting Tuesday, August twentieth. That's all I have for August.
WIPA is on the twenty first. And on the tenth, there is the uh. Uh, Greenlee County Showdown. That's where. They bring in the animals and, and, and have uh, the four H and FFA uh. Bring in, that's, that's well attended. Generally, there's quite a few from Graham County and.
That's August?
August tenth.
And I'll validate, but I, uh, August seventeenth, I believe that's when the, the Greenlee County Governor Rule was what happened there, annual meeting. But I'm waiting for verification of that.
I'll just mention as well, I don't think that we have, have any legislative initiatives that we're planning. But if there's something on your mind that you wanted to put forward as legislative initiative to CSA, that's due in August. I believe it is on the first or second. So if there is an idea. Let me know, we'll develop that into a proposal.
Is there any new update on CSA Summit? I know that it's in October, but where?
It is, you know, now, but the exact location I haven't heard yet. I wouldn't be surprised if we're not in the same location we were last time they held it there. I think it was one of the casinos down in Maricopa.
Yeah.
Say Akkin, but I may be wrong. Anyway, but, but they've got several venues that they can, they can host some.
Yeah, that's the seventh, eighth and ninth.
Yes.
Anything else? Bianca?
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now go to agenda item eight, consent agenda.
I saw move, we approved the consent agenda is posted.
I'll second that.
Our motion is second, is there any discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Now go to agenda item. Nine, supervisor reports, Mr. Gomez.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay.
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, uh, and Derek touched on this. The legislator Cindy died, you know, late Saturday evening. And as he's already mentioned, uh, they put several ballot initiatives. At the last minute on, and I think that would buying votes for the uh, for the budget. Of course, the primary election and I appreciate uh, Mrs. Miller coming in and saying, you know. The uh. The primary election is for, less than forty days of, away. Uh, the early ballots and, and mail-in ballots have gone out. Voters in sixteen days, July third. And uh, this session, there was a hundred. One thousand six hundred and sixty bills introduced in a one hundred thirty-eight memorials. Resolutions that have been introduced this legislative session. Three hundred and thirteen bills have passed. Of those three hundred and thirteen bills, two hundred and two bills have been signed into law. Fifty-nine bills have been vetoed and nineteen memorials. Uh, have been signed and all the resolutions pass. So. It's always a relief when, when they Cindy die over there because. Then we know we can work on our budgets and. We don't have to watch it quite so much. And we start preparing for, for next year. And that's my report. Uh, we'll go to agenda item ten, but we'll take a, a break and come back, come into session and then we'll. We'll both go into, so let's take, it's uh, nine thirty eight, let's come back at nine forty eight. Is that thirty?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty. Okay, I see a nine thirty, we'll come back at nine forty.
Uh, they can make the motion and, and then I'll make sure you walk you through what we need to have done.
Well, it's, it's nine thirty-nine and use of nine forty.
Yeah.
Okay. Nine forty, okay.
You were looking at that.
I know, but you're looking there, I, I see a deal.
You want to wait fifteen, fifteen seconds?
Yeah, we will.
Well, that is zero.
Right. To make up for the Jordan zeros, huh?
Well, we're looking.
Sorry.
Nine forty.
Uh, we'll come back into session and, uh, a motion to go into executive session would be in order.
I shall move.
I second.
Have a motion in a second to go into executive session, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now in executive session. Now we need to do whatever we need to do.
All right, um, wh- what we'll do at this point is cut the, and, and feel cut the outside and make sure that there's nothing broadcasting outside of me. If you do that.
Gotta yell it.
Right.
The player.
Are we back at the line?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we've come out of executive session and go back into regular session and there be no other further items on the agenda. This board of supervisors meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now off to Phoenix.